We'll call the Tuesday, March 30th Reno County Commission meeting to order. At the present time, we will have the Pledge of Allegiance and a prayer presented by Pastor Ron Keiker of Countryside Baptist Church following the Pledge of Allegiance.
Our Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let's pray. Father God, we thank you and praise you, Lord, for your love and your grace upon us, and we ask you, Lord, for your wisdom and your guidance on this meeting this morning. God, that you would guide the proceedings and, Father God, all that happens here, God, that you would be first and foremost, and that you would pour out understanding. Father God, I pray for our Reno County. Father God, that you might bless it and continue to prosper it and continue to help with the fires that we have. God, that you might be merciful and gracious in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Pastor. Appreciate your time.
Want to welcome everybody. The only comments I have this morning has to do with the fact that I went out a couple of times to the command center with the fires and was highly impressed with the ability of the people to coordinate all the different fire departments and the people that were involved in that and the communication that was held, both at the First Command Center and then the one down at the Fire Department. I thought excellent, excellent job, excellent coordination between the sheriff, the fire departments, all the different fire departments, and I think we can send Assistant Chief Hannah as well as our own Adam, Wishar, for the work that they did. And I see he's awake here, so we'll call upon him so he can get back to it here pretty shortly. So, is there any public comments? None? Okay. At this time, we'll go to the, is there any additions or revisions to the agenda? I imagine, Mr. Sellers?
Just one question, Mr. Chairman. Item E says a discussion. You know, we had a visit about that last meeting. Are we intending to take any action on that today?
I would ask our administrator for that.
If there was a decision, that would help because when Megan does her budget, she needs to know revenues and the projections are based on the solid waste fees.
Okay, so that could be discussion and possible decision.
Possible decision. If not today, then may the next meeting.
Thanks for that clarification.
I forgot to mention that Commissioners Friesen is joining us today via Zoom as he is in business. And so, Commissioner Friesen, do you have any additions or revisions?
Good morning, Mr. Chairman. Thank you first for representing Commissioner out on the fire line and echo your thanks to all of those men and women that are leading their lives at risk for the protection of our communities. Thanks for that. I'd like to add, or if I can bring it up in my Commissioner Discussion Points, the discussion related to the continuation of the exemption of our mask mandate. I understand as of April 1st, it's likely that would be reset, and it sounds like the governor's going to reissue it, and that would require us to re-accept ourselves from what I heard from the county counselor. And so, it may be worth having the discussion if the commission wishes to continue that.
All right, I spoke with the county counselor a little bit about that. Would you like that put in Business Items F or in your report?
It's up to you, Mr. Chairman, whatever you prefer.
Let's put it in the Commission Reports.
Very good.
Is that all right with you, Commissioner Sellers?
Yes.
Randy?
Yes, I want to add an executive session for attorney-client of 30 minutes that the county counselor will have a motion to read at that time at the end of the meeting.
All right. Okay. And if it's all right, what, so we'll go to the consent agenda. Any other additions or revisions? All right. Consent agenda consists of vouchers of $474,866.62. The only action item on that would take a motion.
I would move we approve the vouchers as mentioned.
I'll second the motion. Any discussion with regard to the vouchers as presented? Roll call, please.
Commissioner Friesen?
Yes.
Mr. Sellers?
Yes.
Mr. Hurst?
Yes.
We'll go to Business Items, and that's two items we'll have here with, let's see, we'll have Resolution 2021 Day Show 8, Renewing a Proclamation of a State or Local Disaster Emergency, as presumed to coordinate with the governors. So, Adam, would you have any comment with regard to that?
Commissioners, Adam Wishar, Emergency Management Director. So, the governor's disaster declaration is actually set to expire on May 28th of 2021 now. What we requested is June 30th of 2021. That puts us out approximately 90 days from today. The reason for that is hopefully, we're hopeful that we'll have enough vaccine where everyone who's wanted vaccine at that point in time or wanted to be vaccinated at that point in time would have the opportunity to do so. We won't have to extend it again. The governor's disaster declaration, talking to the state, they believe that it could still get extended past that May 28th deadline. So, that's why we requested June 30th.
Are there any questions for Adam?
I would move that we approve the resolution renewal.
Second?
Been moved and seconded to approve the resolution renewal. Further discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Friesen?
Yes.
Mr. Sellers?
Yes.
Mr. Hurst?
Yes.
And at this time also, due to yesterday's fire, Sunday and Monday's fire, that Adam had declared a fire emergency, would you cover that, please? And we've been informed of that and have it here.
Our week really started on Sunday. There's a fire in, it's District 3's territory or Nickerson's territory up near the 82nd Plum area. There was a large grass fire that was started by a controlled burn inside of a, burning some brush, and that quickly got out of control and it actually went east of Plum Street all the way up until what we would call 90th Street, and there's several houses back in there. As soon as you get on the east side of Plum Street, it is District 2 or Hutch Fire's jurisdiction. So, we had just about every resource in the county there as well as Rice County, and we requested the airplane start making some aerial drops for us. We got that one contained fairly quickly, fairly quickly being eight or nine hours, and it was contained, but there are still fire units going out and monitoring that overnight and yesterday. Knowing that the winds were picking up yesterday, they were projected to be anywhere between 50 and 60 mile an hour gusts. We knew that we could be in some trouble with that fire if all those hotspots weren't completely extinguished. Yesterday afternoon, I believe it was approximately 2:00, there was a fire that was called in at Fourth and Bueller. When units first arrived, they realized it was actually more at the Fourth and Williston area, and that rapidly started progressing north. We, Hutch Fire called several units, every unit in the county that could get there, as well as Rice County, Harvey County, and Sedgwick County to start providing resources to us. And it was quickly becoming out of control, and we knew we were going to be overrun. At that point, we realized that there was not enough resources of the surrounding counties that we could rely on mutual aid for. We're going to need some air assets because of the terrain and heavy timber in those areas. So, we requested that the Board of County Commissioners declared a local emergency so it would open up state resources to us. So, after that, disaster declaration was declared. We got a task force out of Sumner County that came in, and they helped us as well. And then, we also had the airplane. The airplane is on contract through the Forest Service, and we requested that through the Kansas Department of Emergency Management. And across the time he could work yesterday, he made approximately 20 dumps for us, and I heard he did some great things. Hutch Fire and the Sheriff's Department's doing a press release at 10:30 at their Command and Training Center out on East Fourth, and they're going to talk about an estimated value of property that was saved yesterday. While we were working that fire, there was a second fire that started in the 95th and Plum area, and that quickly progressed past the county line into McPherson County. So, not only were we managing that one, but we had to branch out and start working on from 95th to 108th to manage that as well. So, our resources were spread really thin. We worked, I went home approximately 4:00 last night, and there's still people there. Got back at 6:00, there's still people there. We're working long shifts, and it's really taken help from everyone. Orin Moody was out there yesterday doing some of the press stuff for us. Dawn's people came out and did some amazing dozer work for us, as well as City Public Works, Police Department, Sheriff's Department. We've had lots of donations. Salvation Army came out, they made approximately 200 sandwiches, and that's how many firefighters we had there. Every single one of those got eight. Pizza Ranch came out, they donated a whole bunch of pizzas, probably 20 or 30 pizzas. All those went out to firefighters, those got eaten as well. So, right now, we've put in a request for Black Hawks through the state. They're grounded due to the high wind, but they're thinking if the forecast holds, we could get them later this afternoon, maybe 1:00. So, after I leave here, we'll be working on setting up some sort of dump sites for them or where they can pull water from. And then, we're going to hopefully be dropping some aerial water to get into that heavy brush and put some of that out. The only road closed right now is 108th east of Plum, and that's due to the heavy brush that the fires got into, and it was actually knocking trees onto the street. Townships were out blocking roads. I mean, it's really been a whole community effort, but it's been neat to see.
You know, Adam mentioned those two fires. I understand that there was also three other spot fires in the county also and that were handled by the local areas, those fire departments, that they weren't as quite as dangerous but could have been.
Correct. There's three other fires at the same time, and then there's also two structured fires in the city of Hutchinson. And since all the, all Hutch Fire's units were tied up and they're providing structure protection on the houses that were, the fire was impeding on, there are some rural units as well as a Rice County engine that were coming in to assist with that structured fire as well.
All right. Adam, some questions, maybe more as a citizen interested in how this all gets together and happens than as a commissioner. Where is the tanker located at this point? It used to be in Hutchinson. Is it still located in Hutchinson Airport?
So, Tanker 95 is still at the Hutchinson Airport. It's actually flown by an individual who resides in Nickerson. So, we're very fortunate to have him here. Generally, when he flies out, he doesn't have near as much daylight, his turnaround time isn't quite so quick, so 20 dumps in a day is pretty impressive.
And where does he get water?
They actually have a hydrant there, and they have a hose.
So, he lands, fills his tank, takes off again?
Yes, sir.
Okay. When the emergency declaration yesterday said that it would allow you to use the Sedgwick County Task Force, what is that?
So, anytime we call for a, we can call Sedgwick County on mutual aid, but if we specifically request a task force, they have to get mission assigned through the state, and they're eligible for reimbursement. As long as we have the disaster declaration in place, the governor has agreed to cover the expenses for those task forces. So, when we got Sedgwick County and Sumner County in, Sumner County with work rest cycles, they're not allowed to drive back to their county after this fire because they just worked for 12 hours and it's not safe. So, they also provided hotel rooms for those individuals as well.
Okay, and do we know the cause of these fires?
So, uncertain at this point in time. I will tell you, the Fourth Street one, one of the residents there said he heard a loud pop, his power went out, and then he looked out his window and saw a fire. So, reasonably, I could say that one was caused by some wind power lines, but I'm not sure on the 95th Street fire.
Well, certainly, we all appreciate the work of your department and the fire departments, police department, sheriff's department, everybody coordinating. We have a lot of conversations about communications. With all these different people that you have and different agencies, the communication works well?
Communication works very, very well. That's what I tell everyone is my, the job of my office is to find everyone who's smarter than us, put them in a room, and force them to work together. And then, we're just really a big coordinating agency. We don't, we don't take command or control of the situation, but we find the people who need to work together and try to make those bridges with them. And I'll tell you that the individuals that are dealing with us now, Chief Hanen, Hutch Fire, the Sheriff's Department, everyone out there, they've done this so many times, it's pretty seamless. Everyone knows their roles, and we're just filling in where we need to.
Okay. My other comment might be, as you said, you took off at 4:00 last night. I think 4:00 is AM and not last night, but this morning.
Yes, sir, that's correct.
Okay, okay. Thank you very much for your hard work on this, and thank everybody else that's involved. It's just amazing to me that that fire could spread from Fourth Street to 45th in an hour and a half, two hours.
Yeah, and that was, that was with probably estimated, I would estimate probably 100 firefighters on there working that.
Right. I just, I think it's easier to understand for some of us that don't know the county roads the way Chairman Hurst does. We know what Fourth Street is, we know what 17th, we know what 30th, we know what 42nd is and so forth. So, it's easier to understand the distance there than sometimes when you're in rural Reno County. Good job.
Thanks, sir.
Thank you.
Commissioner Friesen, do you have any comments?
Oh, excuse me, I think Commissioner Sellers asked some great questions, and I just wanted to reiterate, thank you, Adam, and thank you again to all of the agencies that have responded, and you're doing a great job. Thanks. Thanks for staying up late and getting the job done, keeping it, keeping it, appreciate it.
Thanks, Commissioners.
I know there was a lot of businesses and individuals, and the Salvation Army was out there, but when I was there, visited with you there yesterday afternoon, that here was Shawna Canoke and her son bringing some drink and some food out to you right away that afternoon, and that's just one of a many, but.
Yeah, it's amazing. It's all the businesses reach out, and what we've been asking people to do is just leave them outside the CTC if you have something for the firefighters. It's every time we go out there, it multiplies, and I can't tell you how many cases of water and Gatorade and food that our volunteers have delivered to those firefighters. So, it's much appreciated.
So, thank you, everyone who was assisting.
Adam, there was a lot of media reporting last night. I saw at least CBS and ABC in Wichita was reporting, which is, I think, positive to get that media attention. Do you have that controlled so that they know who to call such as yourself in this, or how are we handling media?
So, any large incident like this, what we do is we set certain times for press conferences, and we let them know, hey, if you want the information, come out at this time. That way, we're not treating them unfairly, and everyone's getting the same story at the same time. So, for example, last night, they came at 6:30, and they got a very, very brief snippet, and then we told them, come back at 9:30 so we can get you, get you a story before 8:00 news. And then, at that press conference, we said, our next one will be at 10:30 at this same facility. Show up, and you'll get the story here.
So, again, that's all set up and coordinated so that you, they know who to go to?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Adam.
Thanks, Commissioners.
You look pretty wide awake for only an hour or so of sleep.
Looks confused evening.
Next on the agenda is the optional extension of emergency paid sick leave and emergency family and medical leave. Helen Foster, Helen? This is something we have in place, and go right ahead.
Hi, my name is Helen Foster. I'm the interim HR Director right now. I bring before you the change that has come with the American Rescue Plan Act. They passed this law on March 11th. It's due to go into effect on April 1st. It is an optional extension to the emergency paid sick leave and the expanded FMLA. So, with this new act, it would, right now, we are due to end the commissioners' policy for the emergency paid sick, and that was 40 hours for the individuals. As it is right now, we've only had 15 employees that have utilized that emergency paid sick from January 1st through March 13th. That's as far as I can get a report on. And it was a total of 542 hours. So, what this would do is just expand that, but it is, and it's not something that we can change. So, if we decided that we were going to opt into this, we would have to elect to have the 80 hours, just like the CARES Act had, the 80 hours of emergency paid sick leave and the expanded FMLA. Things have changed a little bit with this act, just because now part of the circumstances or qualifying events to utilize the leave would be for any time used to go get the vaccine or any time off due to recovery from the vaccine. Also, with the expanded FMLA, it also covers all of those circumstances too. So, it's going to cover the vaccination time, recovery, any of the circumstances that take a person away due to coronavirus. So, that would be for testing, or they're actually sick with coronavirus. With the expanded FMLA, it is 12 weeks. However, we don't have guidance yet from the DOL on whether that is going to be an additional 12 weeks to regular FMLA, or whether that is going to just be 12 weeks as a whole for the year period. So, with the expanded FMLA, it is 2/3 of their pay, meaning that they would use the other 3rd in their paid leave to, to go against the 2/3, so they could still have a whole paycheck. That's how the expanded FMLA would work. Do you guys have any questions on this policy?
I think we should continue the policy.
I agree. Commissioner Friesen, any questions?
No.
Okay.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Entertain a motion to approve the optional extension of the emergency paid called EMLA. So, move.
Second.
Moved and seconded to approve the extension of the emergency paid sick leave and the emergency family and medical leave. Any discussion? If not, roll call.
Mr. Friesen?
Yes.
Mr. Sellers?
Yes.
Mr. Hurst?
Yes.
Thank you, Helen.
Thank you.
Appreciate the explanation of the differences. Community Corrections, Randy, to explain the FY22 Kansas Department of Corrections Juvenile Services reinvestment grant application.
Good morning, Commissioners. Just as maybe a little bit of lead in, just as a reminder, these community corrections supervise people in felony supervision, were funded through the Kansas Department of Corrections via grants. So, the grants that I have this morning are two of those grants. This first grant, when we talk about the Justice Reinvestment Grant, what we're talking about is the money the Department of Corrections has saved from closing out-of-home placements, the money they used to save, used to put to housing kids out of home. They've reinvested that to try to put the money back into the communities. So, this is a part of that money, what we're asking for. So, we're currently in year two, this is for year two of a three-year grant as part of the Justice Reinvestment Grant application. All they needed this year was a grant budget. They didn't ask for any narrative or anything else since it's year two of a three-year grant. What we're going to continue to pay for is a full-time licensed addictions counselor and a part-time mentor through the Substance Abuse Center of Kansas. This provides basically substance use services to youth in the community. Those services are free to kids that are on community corrections or on court services, which is the lower level of probation or the diversion program that the state has. So, those services are free to them, that's what this grant will pay for. One of the nice things I will mention with it is by doing this grant, SAC is able to provide this service in the community, and it is open to other youth in the community. So, if someone had a child that needed these services, we would have a provider in the community that'd do it. You'd still have to pay through your insurance or through other means, but it does, it is available to other kids in the community. Do you have any questions on the grant?
Any questions? Commissioner Friesen? Commissioner Sellers?
No.
Okay, take it. Good program?
Do we need a motion to approve that?
We need a motion to approve that.
I so move.
They moved and seconded to approve the Community Corrections Grant application for year two. No further discussion? Roll call.
Mr. Friesen?
Yes.
Mr. Sellers?
Yes.
Mr. Hurst?
Yes.
Okay, we'll go on to the FY22 Department of Corrections Comprehensive Plan Grant. Randy?
Okay, so this is the grant that funds our adult supervision program. You see, there's a large portion for adult supervision and then a fair amount for behavioral health. This is two grants that have been combined into one this year. So, let me just go through the goals that we've set, the budget, some of the things we're spending money on, and then we can go back into some of the data if you'd like to, if you have questions on that. So, for a lot of the goals we set for this upcoming year are continuation of goals from this past year. The Department of Corrections requires agencies to have a 75% success rate or to make a goal of a 75% success rate. If they weren't there in the past or a 3% increase, we ended this last fiscal year at 73.9%. So, we went ahead and set a 75% success rate for this upcoming year. Basically, what we mean there is that 75% of our people will not be revoked prison. Second piece here would be to admit 40 people into our substance abuse program group and have 15 people successfully complete. Last year, we had 48 people admitted and 13 successful completions. So, we want to kind of continue on that. And again, that's not a formal substance abuse program, it's just, it's curriculum that targets thinking that drives substance misuse. Our second main goal is really to provide training for officers. We have four out of nine officers that have less than two years' experience. So, you know, training is definitely a, an important factor. So, with that, we want to make sure we're, we want to do one coaching session per officer per month. That looks like basically is, one of the supervisors sits in on an office contact with an officer and their client, and then gives them feedback on that in some specific areas. And then additionally, we want to just continue to do training for staff on core correctional practices throughout this next fiscal year. We've had a lot of training this current year through the Department of Corrections, and so next year, we really want to get back to focusing on some of the core correctional practices. But due to some of the required training by DOC, we've kind of had to make that more of the focus. Stepping into the budget, let me just run through that. You can kind of see, well, just to kind of explain this budget sheet briefly, the first main column there is your budget categories, your second is your community corrections administrative costs, your third column there is non-administrative costs, then BH is behavioral health funds, that's your behavioral health grant target items, and then it does include some juvenile funds. You can see the majority of our costs for the agency are around personnel costs. You can see the majority of our costs for the agency are around personnel costs. Couple other large areas would be within the behavioral health grant for contractual category. What we're going to be paying for there, or what we're requesting to pay for is a full-time care coordinator at Horizon's Mental Health Center, a half-time licensed addictions counselor at SAC, and then a half-time peer mentor at SAC. We're also asking for a fair amount in housing for clients. Most of that money goes towards clients living in Oxford houses primarily. And then a few other things as far as substance abuse assessments, some mental health services, sex offender treatment, and the batter's intervention program. That kind of outlines the main items in this grant. Do you have any questions, or would you like me to dig a little deeper into any of these items?
I'm fine with what you've discussed.
I appreciate the, go ahead, Commissioner Friesen.
Yeah, thank you. I just had a couple, Randy, appreciate you being here today, and thanks for all your work in the county. The, at the beginning, you said, I didn't quite understand, is, are all of your programs grant-funded, or what percentage is grant-funded?
It's technically all grant-funded. Counties and judicial districts are required statutorily to have community corrections to provide that service. Basically, what I would put that out as, it's a cost avoidance tool by the state, because what we're, what we're doing is, rather than paying to house a lot of people in the Department of Corrections, we really want to, want to pick and choose there, who do we think can be successful in the community? There's pretty clear statutory requirements as to who's applicable for, for community corrections, it's just felony cases. So, so that's really what we're targeting, we're targeting those high-risk felony offenders, but people that we believe can, with some help, be successful within the community. So we're all, we're all grant-funded. Basically, what we have is, we have some grants for juvenile, we have grants for adult, we do receive some county alcohol tax money that's specifically for our drug court, but that, that's it, we're just grant-funded.
So another way to put this is, there's really no local Reno County tax money going into your budget, is that correct?
It's state general funds that fund our program.
And I'm, I'm sorry, I'm still a little new, and so the, when we say community corrections, is that like, that's different from the jail? Like, you don't, you don't, you may work out there, but it's not the jail or the prisons. These are people that are out on parole, and you're working to rehabilitate them? Can you?
Sure.
I'm sorry, I just, I don't know enough about your department yet.
Sure, no problem. So just thinking through the quick line of, of the way the court system works, after someone's arrested for, for a felony crime, they'll go through the court process, they'll get, if there's a conviction, they'll do, Court Services does a pre-sentence investigation that really determines their criminal history and whether they should be supervised by community corrections or Court Services. They also do a risk needs assessment to help determine that. So then they, the courts have the options to sentence somebody, to execute their sentence, send them to prison on a felony. They could place them with Court Services for lower-level, low-risk felonies, and then they have the option to place them with us for higher-risk felonies. So really, the way to think about it is just traditional probation, but we do target the high risk. So we're, another way that I've kind of posed this to people is, we're someone's last chance before prison. So our, our real goal is to really rehabilitate people and help them change their thinking and behavior to be successful in the community. We target a lot of substance abuse issues, we target a lot of mental health, those are two of our primary things that we're working on as well. But really, we want to help them be successful in the community so that they don't have to serve a prison sentence, which is, you know, we're, we're around, you know, a couple thousand dollars a year per person compared to potentially $35,000 per year to house them. So really, that's why I say we're a cost avoidance tool. If something's not successful with us, you know, we can certainly take them back to court. What our philosophy would be is that we want to send dangerous people to prison, not just people that are a pain to the community. So we're going to try to send the dangerous people to prison, people if you're, if you're harming other people, if you're selling drugs, those things really, those are going to be the reasons that we're going to kind of target you to, to serve your underlying sentence. So then, if the courts decide to revoke, then they would go to the prison system, and then post-prison would be state parole. And we're actually all housed in the same Court Services, community corrections, and parole are all housed in the same facility.
Okay, so you don't, you don't do any parole if, if the person goes to prison, you're just the alternative path to prison?
Yes.
Their last chance.
Yes, sir.
That makes sense. And your cost avoidance, you know, point makes a lot of sense to me. I noticed in our expenditures, there's a significant amount of expense that goes to our prison, and so appreciate your work there. The last thing I wrote down here is, I can only imagine this year, it's been hard to, you know, keep on track and keep, keep the particular metrics that, you know, you created for yourself prior to COVID, but it looks like we're very close on a couple of those metrics, 75% and 15 people completion. I assume you've got a plan in place to, to get over that hump this year?
Yeah, our, our problem with the substance abuse program curriculum is, it's pretty long. It's going to take someone usually about three months to complete that, and we want to target our high-risk people. So as you target, you're going to have a better return on investment by targeting your high-risk. If you target your low-risk, your low-risk, you know, there's a good chance that they're going to, they're going to be successful with little intervention. But, so we want to make sure we're targeting the high-risk people. So as you target the high-risk people, you're going to deal with people that are, that are using drugs more frequently, they're going to be more likely to stop reporting, they're going to be more likely to commit a new offense. It's going to, basically, any of those three items could derail them from attendance, which is going to keep them from being successful. So that's, so that's the challenge, really. You know, you want to target the right people, but those people are also hard to, hard to maintain.
Yeah. Well, I appreciate you working on the harder subset and continuing to strive for as best metrics you can get. So thanks for your work, appreciate it, thanks for the presentation.
Thank you.
Thank you, Randy. You do always do an excellent job of informing and letting the public know through this media.
Sure.
And it takes a lot of special, caring people to, with a lot of patience, and so please extend our commission's gratitude to those people who work here with the higher risk as well as the medium risk.
Sure, thank you.
So. We'll take a motion to approve the...
Second.
It moved and seconded to approve the FY22 Department of Corrections Comprehensive Plan Grant. Further discussion? Roll call.
Mr. Friesen?
Yes.
Mr. Sellers?
Yes.
Mr. Hirsch?
Yes. I think this is some of the things that, until you get in our position, you know very little about, and so it's good to be able to have this out so that people can understand how complicated all of the processes that go into, into the community corrections, it really is.
Yeah, the county provides a wide range of services, it's definitely different.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Next on the agenda is discussion of solid waste fees by Megan.
Good morning, Commissioners. I also have on the Zoom, there is Vida Quinn, she's the project director with SCS Engineers, and Kellen Maudlin, she's the project manager that I've been working with on this rate study back since, well, a couple of years, but since last October when we had our last study session. So if there's any questions after I get done discussing, we can, you can ask them as well. So I'm going to first give a little bit of background. We did a memorandum, kind of giving a scenario one and two of what could be options to you as Commissioners for the landfill's purpose of adequately funding the revenues and the expenditures that we have in our budget to keep things going. A little history and background, since Daniel's a little bit new, and to go back through, we are currently a user-fee-based landfill, meaning we have no gate fees, no, or tipping fees. The either, the history of our user fees, we've been using the user-fee system since the mid-'70s here in Reno County. So a resident that owns a home in Reno County pays a one-time user fee on their tax statement. It is a fee, it is not a tax, but it is on the tax rule statement. We, if not, we are only, one of the only landfills, or there may be another one, I'm not for sure, but we are the only one that I know of that's 100% user-fee-based in our county that is county-owned. Most landfills have either a tipping fee when they come through the gate, as well as a user-type fee assessed on their property tax statements, or they have 100% tipping fees when they come across their, their scales at other landfills. A lot of them are privately owned, but some of them are county-owned, and then there are transfer stations that have tipping fees as well. Looking into, on the memorandum itself, and I also want to go through on tonnages, like for landfill fees, you know, landfill tonnages that we receive. So Reno County brings in about 85% of the solid waste that comes in. That's including construction demolition, municipal solid waste, so if I abbreviate those, MSW is municipal solid waste, and construction demolition is CND waste. Our out-of-counties that we have contracted, we do have five contracted counties with Reno County. Those counties are Kingman County, Rice County, Stafford, McPherson, and Harvey County. Those counties only make up of the, about 15% of that waste that comes in, the waste stream that comes into the Reno County landfill. So it's a small percentage, but it does bring in a revenue to the county of over $1 million that did for 2020. The reason for this rate study that we have done, we have done a financial model master plan, and it's been in the works, I mean, we've created one almost eight to 10 years ago. And the, the financial model itself, it looks into the future, not just two years, but it goes all the way almost to 10 years. It gives us a good overall picture of where we're going to be on our, our capital, capital projects we've got coming up, our capital purchases as far as equipment goes. You know, this year, we, you approved the landfill improvement bond for a new scale house and new customer convenience center. That is also included in this model. So looking forward, or looking forth to incoming years, we were noticing that our, our revenues, we're not going to be able to withhold what we were doing with expenditures as far as capital purchases, equipment purchases, bonding projects, cell, we have a cell eight construction that has, is going to be needed to be constructed next year in 2022. That is estimated right now, obviously, we don't know the, the real cost, but at 1.5 million cost. It's a nine-acre cell, it's a little bit smaller than other ones we've done, but it's still a pretty good-sized cell that usually, on an average, we rebuild, reconstruct cells every four to five years out of the landfill. Now, with that being said, we only have two more cells after this. We are going to go up vertically into the air, about 25 feet further from where we are at currently at grade from the older cells that are there. So it's going to allow us to have a footprint, a vertical footprint of, we don't have to purchase any more ground for the county with us doing this new scale addition, new customer convenience center. So after we're done building these last two cells, there will be no more cell construction, we'll just be going up higher in the air. I gave you options, two options, on the memorandum as you look through. We did consider everything that goes into this, you know, escalation of costs and revenues, the interest earnings, system growth, minimum, reserves, future borrowing, and capital funding. I have had meetings with Randy, we've discussed, for instance, a scraper, when we buy a new scraper, they can be rebuilt two times. We have one that's a 1996 that it needs to be replaced in 2023. It's been rebuilt by the Certified Rebuild Program through CAT. They run anywhere around $900,000. So you can, on the financial model, we currently have it as a, a short-term borrowing, you know, at a percentage rate, but if there's funding in there that we can do, we can pay, you know, to pay for cash out and not have to do long-term, short-term borrowing. Our bond project is a 15-year project, so it is a long-term borrowing on the financial model, and we have those payments every year in that, in that model currently. So I also did, working with SCS, we went in and, and we did scenario one, and that scenario is going to be leaving the user fee that we have currently with no tipping fee for a construction demolition site. There's two scenarios. The scenario one is for no CND tipping fee, leaving it basically how we're running the operations now, but with an increase in our user fee we currently have. Our user fee is set currently at $96. With going with the CND, no CND tipping fee, it would go up to $109. And I'm going to give you pros and cons on each one of these scenarios to kind of give you a big overview of, of everything, and then if you have questions, just let me know. So doing a user-fee-based system, which we had a discussion before, it has its pros and it has its cons. If you're a resident in Reno County and you own a residential home, you get assessed $96 on your tax statement. A business that is also, I mean, a bigger user that has, we do it by container sizes, we ask our major haulers here in town, Stutzmann's and Nysley's, to give us a hauler list for those commercial businesses, and it allows us to go through and see what size of container each business has, how many times a week it is picked up, and then we do a formula throughout the whole year what that units of solid waste is. A, for instance, on revenues, we're, you know, on revenues that could come in, when a hotel, for instance, let's use the Atrium Hotel, they've discussed demolishing it and tearing it down, or even a house. Currently, Reno County receives no revenue on those big projects that come out that go into our CND landfill at the, at the present time. If we were to go to scenario two, which is a $10 per ton CND tipping fee, so you would still have your user fee for the Reno County residents, but it would be a little bit cheaper, it would be $102 instead of $109. But you would also, if you were, I'd say, a resident that brought out a truckload of CND material, if they remodeled their, their bathroom, it would be a $10 per ton tipping Commercial businesses that, you know, it would cover, if a, if a house gets demolished or if a hotel gets, you know, has to be torn down, it would be, there would be a charge for that to be, to be brought out to the landfill. The cons of having a CND tipping fee, you would have to decide and determine, a lot of other landfills, and I believe on page, I don't know if there's pages on here, but there is a section where it shows different CND charges at other landfills. I, I wanted to let you guys see what those were in comparison to what we're looking at for, recommending for a $10 tipping fee. Some of them have minimums, some of them have what they called separated and unseparated or unsecured. What that means is, if somebody comes out with a load of CND material and it has mixed trash in it, so anything that you can put in your trash container is not acceptable at CND per KDAHE regulations, those fees on, some of these are a little bit higher. I would suggest that if, if you decide to go with a CND tipping fee, some type of policy would be put in place for doing a, either like a minimum of a $10 minimum, but also increasing those rates if they do come out with a, what I call a mixed load of CND and trash, for our staff to have to go through those loads and separate those, you know, that material out, or what we don't want to have to do is go to the municipal solid waste side. The reason that is, you don't want everything to have to be put into municipal solid waste, it's an expensive hole to dig. You have the liner material, it's expensive, your airspace is very important when it comes to material that is brought out to the landfill, to be able to keep your numbers at a minimum of what goes over to MSW. We have the, fortunately, we have a landfill that we can separate all this material out from trash, CND, tires, compost, brush, and that type of material that comes out. But as you can see on the chart for construction demolition debris tipping fees by different entities that are around our area, we're relatively very, it's a very low fee for that CND tipping fee that we're suggesting. Based off of the data that we have in our financial model, it goes off of all of our expenditures, all the revenues we receive in, and looking forward from here, it looks like, you know, we will have to adjust these, and what happens is, I put in the revenues, I put in our budget every year to show if we are still stable where we need to be on our, on our user fee rates. But as of right now, with the scenario one, the $109 would surpass to where it would make us stay above the red, I should say, within the next five years, 10 years actually, and then the $102 would be in the next five years. But those numbers obviously could change when it comes to what we bring in, what people are bringing in, what amount of trash we receive in. And it would have to be looked at every year like we do when it comes to budget time. And if you need me to go into explanations on our user fees and assessments on the commercial side, everybody right now currently is at $96. But it is all dependent upon commercial businesses, especially the size of container, how many times a week they are picked up, is how it is based off of right now.
Ready for some questions?
I am ready.
Okay. Let's take, I'm a little concerned with equality with regard to, say, the Wiley Building who has maybe 30 apartments in it, okay? And compare that with a single bungalow of very nearly the same square feet. How does that relate to equal $96?
So currently, the way it is assessed, on a commercial housing, each apartment, mobile home lot within a mobile home park based upon an average annual occupancy of 67%. So if you have apartments, they are averaged at a 67% occupancy rate. So if there's, in an apartment building, if there's 80 rooms, 80 apartment rooms, we assess that at 67% occupancy rate, considering that they wouldn't be full all year round. Doing the current system of a user fee based, 100% user fee based, it's been compared to the little old lady that pays her user fee, pays the service for her trash to be picked up at her curbside, but never makes a trip out to the landfill. Going into a tipping fee, you know, tipping fee structure, having a tipping fee at the gate would fix all these issues. But in the conversations we've had in the past with different commissioners back in October, I took that meeting that we had, that going to a straight tipping fee was not what everybody wanted to go in that direction. So the options that I have given you with 100% staying with how we're doing it now, or going into a scenario two, still charging a smaller user fee to your residential, but charging that CND tipping fee for material that comes in was my next best option.
Well, as a rental owner, a single-family residence, I'm paying more than an apartment owner pays, correct?
It will depend on if...
I'm just, I'm positing, at a 67% rate.
Yes, yeah, it's not at 100%, you're correct.
I just, I just, I'm concerned with that idea that, that... Not trying to make things difficult, but I'm just concerned with that idea. And maybe I'm the only one that is, but...
Well, I've got some questions, and I don't like the allocation process today. I think it's, it has a great likelihood of either errors or, as Chairman Hurst indicated, inequality. I still don't understand why you wouldn't just charge a fee to the trash hauler that picks up the trash bin and have them just assess that directly to the user. I really don't like it on the tax rolls. I think it makes the tax rolls look worse. It has, as I said, a likelihood to have errors. I've experienced it in commercial properties that we own that probably 50% of them were inaccurate in one way or another as far as, you know, whether the size is right, or whether the amount of dumps per week were right. You just can't keep up with that in this model. And so I think there's a few things to discuss here, but maybe I could suggest that we, as a commission, first talk about user fees before we talk about tipping fees. I just see it a much simpler process. If on your trash bill, you have, you know, if it's $96 today, what is that? Eight dollars a month or something? If you had an $8 fee on your trash bill, it's clear what that's for, and it's because you have trash service for that size of trash bin. And it just makes things simple, and then it's always right. Why can't we do it that way?
So I see what you're saying, but a little bit of that goes back to, I think you're getting into that tipping fee, a gate fee, is what you're getting, is what you're, I think is what you're kind of getting to, Daniel, am I correct? On going to a...
No, I don't want a gate fee for users that we, I mean, they're paying it, they're just paying it in the wrong spot. It shouldn't be on your tax bill. It should be on your user fee. When Stutzmann's or the city charges you, you know, whatever it is, $13 a month for your trash service, it's actually 13 plus the fee associated with the landfill, which shows up on your tax bill, which people don't even correlate to the same thing. If your trash bill per month was $20, then you would have the actual cost associated with that particular utility that we're providing. And then you have that directly correlated, and you're not... Right now, you have a disaggregated data set. You're trying to like keep up with how people are using trash by occasionally talking to the trash refuse providers, and that's going to be inaccurate. But if you just said, hey, charge this fee when you charge the user, then they're doing the work for you.
Well, I think one of the things that we need to discuss today is whether we agree with Daniel's approach towards putting this onto a trash bill or whether we feel that it's more appropriate to do it on the taxes. I feel very strongly that, and maybe we need to work a little harder on the commercial fees on the tax situation to get them as true as possible. But I think that to have it as a one-time charge, $8 a month for the use of the landfill is a very modest charge to our citizens. It allows my neighbors who fill their truck with yard waste every week to go out there at no charge. The $8 a month charge is a very modest charge. It's understandable by people. It's been there. I think by changing it, we're getting into an area of unknown. And I think that we should personally leave it on the tax roll. Now, I might, I don't know enough about it. We might want to look a little harder at the commercial waste issues of businesses and so forth. Commissioner Hurst brings up a good point about, on apartments, only figured at 65% of total occupancy. That is a questionable deal, but I'm not sure. Our question today is, do we approve a process of continuing to have this on the tax roll and then to implement a tipping charge for commercial construction waste?
Correct.
To me, it's a discussion for another day about whether that should be 65% or 85%, Commissioner Hurst. I think we're getting this too broad, and we ought to rein it in to the issues that they're asking about today, which is a continuation of the tax policy and to implement a tipping charge for construction waste. Taking too much time here, but I did contact several contractors, and I was surprised by their response to me. One, they feel that Reno County runs a very good solid waste facility. These are people that work in miscellaneous counties. One, they understand that it costs, and they're used to paying more in other counties per your chart. They really didn't want to pay more money, but they understood the need for commercial waste to be charged for. Megan, on your chart on other counties, is that a per ton charge?
That is correct, that is a per ton charge.
That's just amazing to me that we're going all the way from zero to $60 a ton.
And that's just construction demolition. Municipal solid waste is a different ballgame. But this, I'm focusing on CND because that's what we had discussed back in October.
The, I was very surprised by talking, I called three different contractors that are involved in Reno County, and they understood that, and they're used to paying more. I guess my concern, and we're all over the places, three different commissioners here, is that I guess I'm concerned about a huge demolition project of how much that might cost, you know? And let's call a spade a spade, an atrium hotel. Know how many tons of debris that is, Megan?
I couldn't, honestly, I can't give you an answer on that because I don't know.
It could be...
So how would it is...
$100,000 or more, could it not?
At least, yeah.
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 And I guess I'm concerned about a policy that would not be an incentive to keep our county cleaned up and that somebody might not tear down a building because they can't afford the...
Well, I think we need to put a carve-out in there and use it as an economic development tool where projects can come to us of a certain size on an individual case basis. And we can use that as part of our, you know, our investment into the project and waive or reduce large project development CND costs.
I would say, you know, on both of Mr. Sellers and your comments, on the commercial side, you know, I have myself and then my two office staff that are assessing the commercials on top of doing our normal day-to-day activities. We do work with the appraiser's office and get lists from them on the commercial side. You know, we do the best we can to keep up on, you know, a small business that opens up at the beginning of the year, and they can't make it, and they close by the end of the year. And then, you know, you've got your bigger volume customers. For instance, I'm just going to say Siemens because they're a big customer that brings out waste, construction demolition waste to us on a daily basis, multiple times a day. You know, some of those we have to do by volume, not just one, because they don't have necessarily one container at their business. And going by case by case, like you're talking, Mr. Friesen, on economic development, that'll be really hard to keep track of. How are you going to determine which, you know, which one to help with charges on, I mean, on a officer administrative, you know, position? That might be a hard decision to make when it comes to...
I'm not talking about hundreds. I'm just talking about if there's an atrium project, and they come to us and say, hey, if you cut this fee in half, that would help us. And we address it on a one-off basis.
And I know the city of Hutch, they demolish, you know, they condemn houses every year, and we have anywhere between eight and 12 houses a year that get brought out to the landfill that are torn down.
I think that's opening up a hornet's nest by trying to distinguish between projects. I think it's difficult to handle. It's a nice idea, but I don't know how practical it is. And from a standpoint of, we just tore down a barn, and I hauled it over to the landfill. Now, it was worth it to me, and I don't know how anybody looks at it, but it's worth it to me to be able to haul that away and get rid of the nails and the boards and everything, to me, and pay 50 bucks or 100, rather than have to move it to a spot on the farm or a spot on anybody's property and try to bury it, and then end up with a level one or level two potential hindering a sale just because you had to have an assessment done on that property because it happened to have, it was 100 years old or 80 years old, and it had lead-based paint in it. So to me, I just think that might be really opening up the hornet's nest. And I think if we can do it, if anything, I'm looking at maybe an out of county or a mixed load increase to pay for some of these expenses. But it's a cost of doing business, I feel. And I know what you're getting at, both commissioners, in the fact that a project is a project, whether it's a single-family residence or a commercial like Atrium or anywhere else that might have to be demolished and torn down. And there's a certain amount of, if I understand, if I remember this right, if there's some concrete, that goes to a different place and is kind of recycled. Is that right?
Yeah, if it's mixed, if it's mixed with your CND, it depends on how much concrete you do have. We have a concrete pile that we actually, the county themselves, we prepare it, and then we have a concrete crusher come in, and we use that rock, that concrete for rock material on the onsite.
Okay, so the concrete that we have that's recycled is used onsite and not sold back to the community?
Correct. We do not sell anything back to the community.
As I'm being told, that recycled concrete is a valuable commodity, isn't it?
We get quite a few phone calls and ask if we will resell our concrete material.
You need all of it.
So the project we're currently working on with the new scale house and the customer convenience center, we actually are using that concrete, road-based rock, inch and a half on the project itself for the pad just to begin work on it, and then we also use it on our roads out on the facility.
We learn something every meeting.
Yes, we do, don't we?
Well, I've got a few more questions before, maybe. We're all over the place here. We've talked about four or five different topics, and seems to be very little consensus so far. So maybe we could get a little more information. The... Let me just look it up there upstairs here. So the allocation, like, as far as, so I heard that 85% of the waste is produced or produced from Reno County. What percentage is commercial, percentages residential? Do you have that mix?
So I would have to run a report. We run what we call general public Reno County. And then when we have haulers bring out waste from commercial businesses, they will tell us if it's coming from a certain business. I would have to do, I cannot give you that answer right now today, but I can send you a report of what our Reno County customers bring to what is not Reno County customers, and it would be commercial businesses.
Do you feel our user fees are allocated, associated with the amount of waste that's produced? For example, in all of the residential fees, if that revenue of our total revenue is 50%, is 50% of our refuse residential?
I would say, I would say at least, I would say at least that. Because you've got to remember all the, you know, the haulers that pick up your... all the, you know, the haulers that pick up your polycard every week. Plus, I have residents that make their trips multiple times a week out to the landfill on top of having a polycard at home that come out.
Well, again, I just, I feel like the fees should be allocated based on usage and I'd like to see how it's allocated today.
It's going to be a little, on that, for usage, with it, us not having a gate fee to where we don't require, we ask them to come back around for empty weights, you know, when you come out to the landfill, but not a lot of them do. We do ask that they come back around. So giving it an accurate number of what is coming in, you know, residential to commercial, it is going to be a little tough to.
Well, it doesn't have to be precise just to.
Commissioner Friesen, I know when I've gone out there, they want to know if I have had an empty weight and I do have, they will tell you an empty weight for your vehicle. Now, is that an average? Yeah. They may have more gas in it or less gas in it, or I may have something in the back of my pickup that I didn't have before. And I kind of try to adjust for that. If I've got a extra something in the back of the pickup, I may add a hundred pounds to the, to my net weight that I have otherwise, but we have that net weight pretty well down. I've got a card they give you to put it out there. So if you really want to be accurate, why, there's ways to do them pretty close. I wonder.
And again, I'm not looking at like high precision. I'm just trying to make sure that, you know, if we're asking residential users to pay eighty percent of the total cost of the operating of the landfill and reducing forty percent, I wouldn't agree with that. But if, this is a utility to me and it's no different than any other utility you should pay for use. And I think some, and I think over time, this has gotten a little overly complicated and a lot of balance and I just like to rebalance it. I asked, Randy and I asked Kelly for just the operational budget of the landfill. I know we have like a budget sheet that's a little different than kind of a more traditional expenses and revenues, operations budget. We have one of those that we can review.
Well, Daniel, to me, one of the problems of your approach towards putting this onto the trash haulers is how do you charge for the resident that doesn't use one of those trash haulers and goes out to the landfill every week with their own trash or with yard waste or brush? And going in your approach, you'd have to charge a tipping fee for all people entering the facility. And I'm adamantly opposed to that because I think if we start charging for residential brush and crud around your house, we're not going to have people cleaning up their place. And I just think that that's a poor policy.
You might not have them clean up the place, but they're also going to dump it on my country road. We've been that before.
I don't understand the logic of that argument because if anything, you're just putting more expense on the people that use the trash bin, but that doesn't, that doesn't dissuade a person from using the dump because there still wouldn't be a tipping fee for the residential users. And I haven't seen any information to indicate that, you know, we have like twenty percent of residential landowners that don't have a trash bin. Like how many people in this argument actually don't have a trash bin? Like who in Reno County who has a house doesn't have a trash bin?
I think there's a considerable amount of those people.
You know, are we getting?
Outside of municipality, right? Like in the county, is what you're saying? I think that should be allocated in a different way. I don't have, I don't have enough information yet. One of the things that, you know, you're saying that, you know, you're disagreeing with me. I don't know how many people don't use trash service today in the county, so maybe that would help me with this decision.
I.
I also see in here, sorry, I'm just going through my list of questions here.
You bet, go ahead.
We have a five to six million dollar, it looks like, reserve, just cash. And based on the report that I have here, we're not ever using that. It's just sitting there, six million dollars in cash. Am I looking at that wrong?
Would you ladies explain that? I think that's a state mandate, is it not?
Yeah.
That is correct. We are mandated by KDHE. So if KDHE comes and decides that we are not operating sufficiently, we, you know, they close us down and say, you're going to have to close. We have closure and post-closure costs. I don't know if you've looked through things and seen things on the budget or just like hearing conversations. So if we were to close down the landfill, say the county decided they didn't want to operate anymore, we closed down the landfill, you have to have money in your reserve fund to fund that closure costs for thirty years. You still have to pay for the maintenance of the facility, the operations that goes with it after you close the landfill. Just because you close the doors doesn't mean that you're done with operations onsite.
How much is that?
On a percentage or?
Yeah, how much do we need to hold in reserve?
Well, there's not a definite number for KDHE to give us that. Monty is here and do you have that, do you want to speak to that terms on percentage for reserves?
My name's Monty Markley with SCS Engineers.
Go ahead, step up closer, please. With your mask, it's hard to.
Yeah. My name's Monty Markley with SCS Engineers. I don't have, so let me back up just a little bit. I think as we try and move you to a point where you can make a solid policy decision, information will help you gentlemen obtain alignment as policymakers here or get you as close as you can be so you can make a decision. And two things on that. One, when it comes to the reserve estimates, those are based on your specific acreages. KDHE has formulas that you can use for closing things on a per-acre basis. They're based on industry standards. Then you've got post-closure care requirements that you work for your environmental stewardship, remediation, things of those nature. That's what dictates that dollar amount in that fund and each landfill is site-specific.
What's the number?
I don't have that number in front of me. Dan Vida might have it here and I think some of this, it would probably be useful to, Vida Quinn's our rate study expert and management consultant for utilities. She may be able to answer some questions and give you gentlemen some specifics. If I talk about it, I'll botch it, which is why Vida's here, so I would let her talk about some of those specific items and then I think that's all I have.
All right, Vida, go right ahead.
I have so much to say. Not as much specifically about that fund balance requirement though. I don't know. We do know that whatever is in there, we are assuming in the financial projections cannot be touched. And at some point, yes, we'll need to put in a maximum number, like whatever that total amount needs to be so that the utility can then begin to spend any funds in excess of that for operations. But while I have the microphone, I wanted to respond to a couple of the questions that you all had brought up earlier because maybe I can help you make a little bit of sense of it. It seems to be a thought that the way the operations are currently at the landfill is how they are normally done and that what Megan is suggesting is unusual, when it's actually quite the opposite. In most communities, that is how waste is charged. There are just tipping fees at the gate in the landfill. And as far as concerns about equity for users who periodically come to the landfill, that's a policy decision. So for example, I live in a fairly rural, poor county and for each property that you own, so this goes back to someone who asked about a rental property, you have a free ton of waste per year that you can bring. So someone who's making regular trips to landfill, just simply bringing, you know, household solid waste or very small project waste would usually fall within that ton. Rental owners that are maybe renovating a bathroom should be able to bring that for the first ton free for a year. So that takes care of a lot of those concerns with people who might only occasionally need to use the landfill. But there is no difference theoretically in how your customers would be charged. So what they're paying in a user fee now would simply be reflected in their tipping fees or in their solid waste rates because the haulers now would pay a tipping fee at the gate and that would be a pass-through into their solid waste bills. So the equity really is, and that was brought up, the issue of who's paying right now and it is very difficult. I've talked to Megan Edman. It's difficult to track the waste and to make sure that while it's free for residents, that that's truly who's paying for it. And any of these other policies that you're considering, I would encourage you to think about who's actually going to pay for that. So no waste is processed and taken into that landfill for free. And so any incentives that we give to people to bring waste and say, well, this shouldn't cost, someone has to pay for that. And there does need to be the question of whether the general fund will pay for certain incentives that you want to give for certain types of waste. But I think we should, in terms like that, with the need for revenues for the landfill. And I'll stop talking now.
I may try to simplify this a little bit and while getting all kinds of trouble for this, but basically what we're looking at is how are we going to finance the project, correct? How are we going to finance the continual operation as well as the expansion, correct?
That is correct.
So if we're looking at scenario two, which would be my favorite in a type of, now the numbers on users and how we come up with that may differ, but it looks to me like if we do, add the CND tipping fee charge and essentially, I looked at one other thing. Do we raise the CND? If I'm looking at the little chart underneath here, the green and the orange and yellow, that it appears to me that in maybe twenty-three or twenty-four, that somewhat of a raise somewhere might be necessary. And so in that case, do you look at maybe raising, we've already raised the out-of-county tipping fees. Do we look at raising CND tipping fees by a buck or something like that?
And these were just, these are just numbers, we started with a small number on CND. Does not mean you cannot increase those numbers. Every year we will update this financial model.
But this is based on being able to meet the bond obligations and the operation
With the big expenditures that we.
Of the landfill, right?
Correct. What we have currently, what we have predicted to spend in the next five years for sure, but I mean, almost ten.
But Megan, expand on that because when you said five and then ten a minute ago, it confused me.
That's okay.
Is this analysis a five-year program with the hope that it'll go ten or it kind of sounds like you're thinking it works for ten?
Anything past the year 2026 is kind of hard to project, to get more accurate numbers after that five-year period because you don't know what your waste stream is going to be. Recycling could change, you know, you could receive more special waste, your, you know, in 2020, we received more MSW from Reno County than we did the year before with COVID because people were home. They were bringing more things out to the landfill. Waste streams, you know, waste streams change every year. So I mean, to go out ten years, we can go out ten years with the idea of knowing what our expenditure is for our bond payment and what my vehicle replacement plan is as far as what the costs of those could be. But as far as anything over the capital expenditures that we have, you know, five years is more of a number to keep, you know, with numbers more accurate.
So Mr. Chairman, are you prepared to make a motion here?
I would be prepared to make a motion, but it's, it may sound a little different because I can foresee us discussing this along and maybe changing some of the structure within this, but to ensure that we have the amount of finances generated to sustain the landfill and to pay for the improvements that we're doing based upon this model to guarantee that revenue. Does that make sense?
My question to you as commissioners would be, it says ten dollars per ton. A lot of them do the ten-dollar minimum because if you bring in less than a ton, you know, you'll have your, whatever it might be, two-hundred-and-fifty pounds and it's at ten dollars per ton. You know, do you want to make it to where it's an even flat rate so you know exactly if you bring a pickup load of stuff and it, you know, it's going to be, you know, it's going to cost you at minimum ten dollars? That's a, like Vida was saying, those are policy decisions as you as commissioners would have to discuss and make to make it to where administratively at the landfill, you know, would be, when a resident or even a commercial, but you know, they know minimum it's going to cost them ten dollars a ton for CND.
Or if it's less than a ton, it's free.
Or, yes.
Well, you know, you didn't put this down here, Megan. You didn't put that option down here.
I didn't want to give you too many options, but there is, I mean, I'm letting you know that those are policy, those are policy, you know, enforcements that can happen where other, where other counties that I know have. If it's under, if it's less than a ton, then it doesn't cost them anything. If it's, you know, it's a minimum fee for bringing out waste, then you know it's going to cost whatever that minimum is if it's over a ton.
Mr. Chairman, I got, I have another question.
Go ahead.
Is it unreasonable for some of these questions that I've asked to be answered before someone places a motion on this decision today?
I would ask this. We've got a project going. We've committed dollars to this. How, Randy, maybe you can help. How soon do we need to set this in motion to where there's enough dollars here to pay for it?
Well, the budgets are due in April. I mean.
We have out-of-county budget, out-of-county.
So any change from what it is now, I mean, the other counties, as they're projecting their budget of what it's going to cost them to bring trash to Reno County, they need to know it very soon.
Scenario two doesn't have any changes until 2022, does it? Wouldn't that indicate there's no urgency here?
That's just the Reno County user fee on the taxes.
What else is there?
You've got out-of-county tipping fees, we have our special waste fees and these are all, this is.
Some of those things are changing. I saw the highlighted green was the changing.
No, there, if you, so in year 2021, it shows our rates, what we currently charge. So based off of the decision that you make today or in the next couple of weeks, those changes for 2022 will become effective January one of 2022. So our user fee for Reno County residents would be one oh two, out-of-county would go to thirty-four dollars and then our special waste and asbestos goes up to forty-one and sixty-one. So those fees did increase as well. It's not just Reno County fees that increased on this, on either scenario. Scenario one or scenario two.
What are you?
Where is that notated?
If you look at scenario one and scenario two on the spreadsheet, where it's kind of highlighted in that light green right below it, it'll show the dollar amounts. And if you look at the year prior, which is 2021, it shows what we're currently charging on those fees.
I don't see where, you indicated that the out-of-county tipping fees have changed. I don't see where it's indicating.
Are you on, are you looking at scenario two, page five?
Looking at either, let's see, either one.
So if you go to the line that says out-of-county tipping fee per ton, 2020 was thirty-three dollars, 2021 is thirty-three dollars, 2022 is thirty-four dollars, 2023 is thirty-four dollars and then it goes to thirty-six in 2024.
Well, and again, the change is until next year, right?
It will be effective January. It will be effective January of 2022. But the counties that are contracted with us or just like us here in Reno County, they have to have their budgets set. Some of them actually are due by the end of this month. Where, I mean, May 1 is the, I mean, I would say no later than April 30th, honestly.
So $1 change?
Yes. And the reason for the, on the out-of-counties, you've got to look at other surrounding counties and what they charge. I know we've had this discussion of out-of-counties bringing waste into Reno County, but at the rate of the out-of-counties bringing trash in and they generate that million dollars of revenue that helps also the overall budget for Reno County. And I know there are some surrounding counties that are not too far off from where we are at. We're pretty competitive on our rates with those, with those out-of-county tonnages tipping fees.
Well, I'm just not comfortable making decisions today. And if there's a motion set, I'm going to vote no because I feel like I have reasonable questions that could be answered in two weeks. I'm not convinced that two weeks is going to substantially change this.
I have a question on your thoughts on approving any, as the landfill operators and as the engineer and as fellow commissioners, what are your thoughts on any, receiving any out-of-county CND?
Receiving any out-of-county CND? Most out-of-counties have their own CND demolition sites. Majority of them do, even the smaller, even the smaller, like Rice County, Kingman County, they have smaller. We do receive some CND, like Rice County, for instance, if it's not clean enough for Rice County, but they know it would be okay to bring to Reno County. They bring that CND to us already. But they are charged at the rate of $33 per ton.
Okay, all right.
If that answers your question, yes.
What, I would, I would like to see a consideration for those people who bring out a dumpster that is mixed load. You know, I think they should be able to sort those things before they put them in a dumpster.
So currently, I'm going to step in real quick and let you, give you the cons of, on our mixed load issues. And I know that we've had, I know there's been calls up to the administration office here, you know, when we refuse a load because it is mixed with too much trash. And we try not to, we try not to turn away loads. We give them, you know, the one free card and say, this is what our rules are. This is what we ask you to do, commercial or residential. They're all treated the same. What we run into is we get, you know, for instance, a commercial load that's a big 40-yard container that's got mostly CND, 80% CND, and it's got the rest, you know, 20, 30% is trash. It depends on, you know, what it is. If the haulers, they do help us, meaning Nysley's and Stutzman's, their drivers will pick out that trash. But sometimes that trash is too much. We don't want to have to send them all the time to our MSW because airspace is very expensive. So when it comes to, like, we talk about policies, you know, where you want to deal with, with costs of things, you know, there will be those discussions and I will be the bad guy at times that says you needed to separate this or we won't accept your, you know, we won't accept the load. Most people, they're willing to separate out their trash from their CND. So the cons of, you know, having the mixed load and charging this, charging a fee for CND, it's education. And I've got a whole year to educate the public. I've got a whole year to educate businesses and work with them. And they work with us, with our supervisors on the mixed load situation.
Okay. Well, let him handle it in-house.
And Daniel, I know you've been really busy, but at some point, if you want to come out and look at, you know, come look and tour the landfill, see what it's all about, see what we do, do out there and all the, you know, for the reasons why we are, I mean, you look at our budget, it's a lot, it's a big budget and there's reasons for it. And I, and I can explain all those reasons to you and I'm more than happy to whenever you get a chance to come out and visit.
Yeah, I might do that next Tuesday. I don't, my arguments aren't really even, they haven't even made the argument that we should reduce expenditures. It might be a question I have, but my questions are not related to your operations. They're just how we allocate the expense.
Right. And I think coming out and looking and seeing what, who comes out and the traffic flow that we have might help you understand a little more the process of how we calculate everything on tonnages and usage.
Well, I just like, I mean, I can type out my questions. I just like allocation information as to how much is residential? How much is commercial? How much is CND? How much is out-of-county? Like, we should have that information, right?
Yeah, I've got all that. I, we do tonnage reports to KDHE every month, so I have got CND, MSW.
But hasn't all that information gone into the
It's all in the model.
Cullens' modeling of income and so forth? So Daniel, it appears to me that the experts have taken a look at those numbers of types of waste that we receive to come up with how much money we need to take in.
Well, then it should be on the report somewhere or it should be provided. I mean, if they don't need our input on this, then that's fine. But I think there's a reason it's here, right? And I'm just not comfortable yet without that information.
I would move to
Did you speak to that?
Go ahead, what?
Yeah, I do need to clarify what this report does and what these annual updates do versus what I think Daniel's concerned with. This report and these annual updates are what we would call a revenue sufficiency analysis. That's just saying, do we have enough money to pay our bills right now? Over a five-year planning period? And then if not, what can we do to generate more revenue? In this case, we're trying to take some of the pressure off the user fees and looking for potential tipping fees that the county can implement. This is not meant to deal with the broader picture of whether charging these fees on a tax bill is the most equitable, easy-to-administer, fair way of creating this revenue. So if that's a separate study, it would not be reflected in this analysis. That is why even if you wanted to make these changes, which, by the way, I recommend moving to a tipping fee, but you wouldn't be doing it this year because you haven't had a chance to have these studies. We would need to do a full tipping fee study. The county would need to update its administration, the way they charge customers to make sure that we have the capacity to charge tipping fees by waste type and a number of other things that may not currently be working. So what this is asking for is a plan to just increase revenue enough so the landfill can continue to operate with its existing level of service? If you want to address the tipping fee or potentially other alternatives, that is a decision that can be made in the future, but it doesn't change the need to have a decision made regarding generating additional revenue right now.
Thank you. I would move to approve scenario two, providing the gross dollars to have a revenue sufficiency for the landfill operation as presented with the notice that allocations within the modeling fee may change.
Second.
Been moved and seconded. Any further discussion?
Yeah, I've got questions to that. Have we looked at how to reduce expenditures in the process of modeling this?
So currently, I'm going to give you a few, what we currently do to reduce expenditures out the landfill right now. So we receive in metal from Reno County residents. And I'm going to give you, I'm going to give you all of our operations of how things work to give you an idea. So we receive, let's start with the, we recycle the mattresses that come in. We don't put those into our airspace, into MSW. It gets taken to the correctional facility. We also pull out wheels from the metal that we receive. We separate those and we take those because they are worth, aluminum wheels are a little more than just regular mixed metal. Even wheels themselves, we go to Midwest Iron and Metal and we receive extra for that as well. We also extract all of the Freon out of the refrigerators. We do not hire a company to come out and do that. We have got, we have employees out at the landfill that are certified to extract the Freon and there is no charge to Reno County residents when they bring those appliances out. As far as reducing expenditures when it comes to operations, there will be one mechanic that we have on staff, which is busy every day. He has, through the years, learned to, on fittings and hoses and replace, you know, he saves the county quite a bit of money when it comes to expenditures on equipment that breaks down out there. When, we also do certified powertrain rebuilds on our scrapers, our bulldozers, and our compacters. So instead of buying new equipment every five years, I mean, like I just mentioned before, we have a 1996 scraper that it's outlived its life cycle. And we are getting ready to, in 2023, it'll need to be replaced, but it's been rebuilt twice. We offer a lot of services to the county as far as with the composting and the brush site. On our expenditure side, you know, there is ways to help on those things. You know, there's other landfills that sell compost or they charge for tires. Our employees that are on staff, we are at 23 employees and we have two shifts and we are at the minimum of what we need for shift, for staffing for what we have on site for required by KDHE. So as far as, we've done a lot of extra that we did not used to do. And also the reducing costs. We used to subcontract out all of our work on our dirt work for our cell construction as well as currently we're working on the pad construction for the new facilities. It's saving hundreds of thousands of dollars to the county. So we've cut costs where I can cut costs here in years past and here recently. So like I said, I'd be more than willing to listen to your suggestions if you have any. Once you do want to come out and visit, I'm up for suggestions.
Daniel, you just learned about 20% of what you learn when you go out and take a tour.
I understand everybody wants me to go out. I won't go out, but there's a few other things we've worked on the last few weeks. But Mia, what's the dollar value in those cost savings?
Dollar value to, speaking of what?
Like, how much have we saved in the count through the work you just mentioned there?
So the dirt work that we're currently doing right now for the pad construction. Last time I talked to Steve Lineham, the engineer on the project, it would cost the county over $400,000 to have a subcontractor come out and do that work.
I think we've actually prepared a table of this that we gave last year and I think
It was over a million.
Yeah, and I think all total over the past five years is about three and a half million dollars.
I don't know if you heard that, Daniel, but through a five-year span, we had a report to where it showed how much the county, we have saved the county and in a five-year span, it's about three, three and a half million dollars. And I can get that to you. That's not a problem.
Okay. Any more discussion on the motion? Does everybody understand the motion?
Well, yeah, my headset went off there for a second, so I didn't hear the last part. I'm sorry. But so the study, so we did, we did a study. The study said increase the rate. In that study, we studied ways to reduce expenditures. Is that right?
That'd be correct.
Okay. Where is that in the study?
Megan, you'd have to tell. Part of it was that savings that our engineer mentioned, doing work ourselves. Maybe he can answer that.
So we have a, we have a vehicle replacement plan that we put in place a few years back that shows where we're going to need to replace big equipment items. And it shows, you know, like I was talking about, our certified power, our certified rebuild program on our certain pieces of equipment. It necessarily doesn't speak to saving money on the expenditures, but I, in looking at what we already currently do and the revenues we receive, it'll show that in the revenue side for the revenues we make and then the costs of operating for subcontracting, for instance, cell construction or our pad construction we currently are doing at the moment. It did not have those costs if we were to hire somebody since Reno County is already doing it themselves.
And the reduction in our overall construction costs, was that factored in into this?
Yeah, this is Monty Markley again. So we didn't specifically look at ways to cut costs in the revenue sufficiency analysis that we prepared, Commissioner Fries. And what we did do, though, was consider the avoided costs and the cost savings. Otherwise, these rate increases that we propose would be even higher. And we can certainly get you that information, you know. There's so much information on the finances, the landfill. We simply didn't bring everything with us today. But one of the things that I think we need to go back and look at and keep in mind from a big-picture perspective is in past years, when we go back and looked at what the prorated per-ton rate for trash disposal in Reno County was, it was 16 to 18, maybe now it's $20 a ton. And when you compare that to what other counties are paying that are well over 30 and sometimes 50 or 60, that demonstrates from a macroscopic level that you're running a very efficient operation. You can always figure out a way to cut another penny or another dime out of it for sure. And we should always strive to be efficient. But when you look at this from a big-picture perspective of what we've done and what the county has brought to the table, as a national solid waste engineering firm, we see very few municipal operations that contribute this level of resource and engagement to minimize your operating costs.
Just looking at the other counties and what they charge. Just looking at what the other counties charge, other counties charge will give you a good indication of the efficiency.
So I
I don't, I don't think it's unreasonable. And I know there's a motion on the table and I'm just, again, objecting to forcing this motion without getting some of my questions answered. You know, I've noted here that we, even though, you know, we can identify ourselves as running efficiently, we didn't in this cost study look at ways to reduce costs. We, it doesn't sound like, this, this looks like the same recommendation that came before we had, before we knew how much the renovations of the landfill were going to cost. And I don't think we factored the reduction in those costs into this.
I think, I questioned, the whole idea is we need to have a revenue sufficient to operate the landfill and that's what this does. Now, how we do it in between and if we can save some money somewhere or another, then that could be reflected in the overall fees.
I
I mean, and then we don't know how much reserve we're supposed to maintain and we got five to six million dollars of cash and we can't even, you know, in this cost study, we can't even say whether that was appropriate or not. I think there's some things missing here and, you know, my questions aren't answered. And I don't think it's reasonable to have this vote today without those questions.
I will say from the
Can I say something to clarify? Because I need to make it clear that those things were addressed within this analysis. If there's any questions, I'm the person to answer it because I worked on this model. Any cost savings that were recognized from reduced costs for that project at the landfill were incorporated into this, including testing different ways of paying for things over time, incorporating some sort of generational equity by maybe bond financing a project instead of cash funding, looking at funding things over their useful lives instead of cash spending upfront and putting additional pressure on the rates. Understand that that's what a financial analysis is. An operational analysis is something different.
And
I understand what a financial analysis is. I, this looks like the same proposal we saw before we knew what the costs were on the landfill. Is that not right?
If you're saying the same financial model, I mean, yes, it would look similar.
Is it the same rates?
No, no, they're not the same rates. It was $120 back in October. And I will mention that we didn't, I wasn't directed to do a cost savings analysis on rev, you know, efficiency for cutting costs on rev rev, on expenditures. We did this financial model as a big, big picture. Um, I worked with Vida and Kellin both. We went through all of our, the cost savings that Reno County does currently and it was configured into the model, but we didn't have direction to look at cutting costs on expenditures.
The motion-
This should always be a motion.
The motion was to allow sufficient revenue. Now how that policy changes within that and what the changes are within that can still be done regardless, uh, because it refi, it lets us have allocation changes in the motion. All we're trying to do is, is provide something that dollar wise, uh, will continue the operations and will allow budget planning, which is coming up very near future.
Mr. Chairman, I would call for the question, which I think takes a second.
Second.
A second then.
All right. And so, uh, roll call please.
Are we voting on the call or the question itself?
We're voting on the, the motion.
Well, I think that's, I think if the, if the, if the question's called, you have to vote on that and then you, then you vote on the question.
All right, we'll vote on the question then. Call, roll call on the question. I don't think that's right, but-
You're, you're, you're voting on the call or you're voting on the motion?
The call of the, call before the motion.
Call before the motion.
Commissioner Friesen?
Yes.
Commissioner Sellers?
Yes.
Commissioner Hertz?
Yes. Okay, now we'll vote on the motion. Call, you go ahead and, uh, roll call on the motion.
Commissioner Friesen?
No.
Commissioner Sellers?
Yes.
Mr. Hertz?
Yes. All right. Uh, I do have one, a couple of, of questions here. Uh, they're a little bit different, but I, I, and I talked to our administrator about this. Uh, I had a phone call from a person that had been talking to you about opportunity, local business to be considered as a subcontractor on specifically the scales. He was never contacted by the bidder. What can we do to make sure that our local people who have an opportunity to be a subcontractor or contractor are notified that they would have an opportunity to bid? As it was, it went to Wichita and, and he felt surely that he could save a few thousand dollars. So my question is, I need to, I think we need to seriously look at how we let our people or in the local businesses who have an opportunity to partake in a construction project, the ability to be noticed, at least called by, uh, the contractors and let them know that they need to contact the local people, okay? And so that was-
It's more of a question to administration, isn't it, than to Megan? I, I think it's-
And I talked with Commissioner Hurst about this on Friday and explained that I will look into it and we'll, we'll work on that, getting something out there.
Now, the other question I have, maybe I want to ask you, do we need all that 168 acres that we have across the road where the, you know, do we need all of that for filled dirt?
Well, not only that, but, um, stormwater drainage, all of our, our, all of our drainage that'll be rerouted once we start building our, our cells, um, they'll, they'll be, it'll be used.
Cause I know it's got that gas line going through.
Yes.
But I just was curious to whether we would need all of that. In other words, I was thinking about, the engineer's back there shaking his head up and down. I just want to be sure.
We need as much soil as we, borrow material as we can get. Otherwise, we're going to be looking elsewhere and it'll be costly to the county.
Here again, I was looking at potential revenue, okay?
Sorry, I turned, I was trying to turn that TV off. May I turn this one off?
No.
I was just looking at potential revenue and, and saw that out there and wondered if we need the whole thing.
Yeah.
Okay. That's all the questions I have.
Thank you.
Anything else?
County Administrator report.
Okay, I just wanted to give an update, let the commission know that the audio and visual work by McClellan Sound at the annex is taking place this week. So if you want to have the next commission meeting over at the annex in that conference room, we can move for the first meeting in April. And I'll work with Commissioner Hurst on, on that. I know our ITs will test it to make sure everything's working over there so that we can still televise, which we should, we just got to work out all the kinks first. Um, also want to let you know that the Human Resources Director position closes at the end of today. I have so far received nine applications and will be scheduling interviews with a select number of those and run them through the Assessment Center that, similar to the previous positions that, um, have come up recently that I've done the hiring for. Another thing, Harland let me know yesterday that our natural gas bill for Feb, February was $12,676.82, which is about 10 times higher than it was the same time last year. So the impact of the, during the freezing, natural gas prices going, it did impact us. Obviously can take care of that with our budget, but it is a lot higher than what we were used to on a monthly bill. And then I will be on KWBW radio tomorrow morning for the show, so I'm just kind of giving you a heads up on that. That's all I have.
Okay. Did you want to mention about our early meeting with, uh, the architect? Is it too early yet? Would you just-
We're still, yes, um, yes, as Commissioner Hurst was commenting, last week there was a, I guess an early meeting with the architects, looking at the courthouse renovations of the main floor, second floor. They had a few floor plans, possibilities, but there were a lot of questions about how we would want to do that, where the commission room would be, whether it'd be kind of in the middle. So kind of as a thought, and I don't have this in front of you, but if you picture the front entrance and you walk right behind the security desk, the commission, new commission chambers could technically be right behind there in, in the middle between all the columns or it could be, and I think it'd seat 60 to 80 people, depending on how much, how wide we go with that, or it could be on the, um, the, where the overflow area is, where the TV monitor is. So we're looking at kind of those options and then what office space might be available on the mezzanine, if there is, if we can do office spaces there. The second floor making a, like a, a walkway from the north to the south that would allow for ADA access through the elevators and then possibly the fifth floor, looking at the storage area up on the fifth floor, which is a very large area, use, that, so that the district attorney could possibly move more of his people to the, all on the fifth floor and have office space and maybe a conference room up there, which may free up, if that was going to work, would may free up space on the fourth, fourth floor for district courts. And then the first and second would be kind of for administration, commission, human resources, possibly the sheriff, possibly IT. So that's kind of what we discussed. We sent them back with a few changes to make and then get cost estimates.
Thank you. I've, I know that we, there'd be some interest in that, so, so excuse me for putting you on the spot right there. Commissioner Friesen? Do you have any commission, uh, comments?
Yeah, like I brought up at the beginning of the meeting, um, I would like, um, perhaps if, if the commission would, and Mr. Chairman, if you would allow the, the county counselor to, um, address the commission on a couple of things. One is a briefing on the changes that are coming up here, um, April 1st related to, um, county health orders, um, the county, um, health officer and, and how the, the, the new, um, the law will, will affect our decision-making along with that. Um, I'd like to, um, ask that we draft, um, a, a re- re-implementation or, or a, a new exemption for the county to continue our, our, our exemption from the mask mandate with the expectation that the, um, uh, governor would, would reissue her mandate on, on the 1st. I have a few other items, but I might stop there and see if, if you would allow the county counselor to brief the commission on those matters.
Uh, if I may interject a little bit here, Commissioner Friesen, is, I had conversations with the county counselor, uh, this morning as well as with, uh, our county administrator yesterday with regard to that and relooked at the items like the 20 days 68 item, um, that was in the original, uh, governor's, uh, plan. And at this time, until we know exactly what changes might be into 2068 or 2052, uh, it's, it's difficult. We can't just do across the board, uh, without having those particular, uh, numbers and documents on hand. And while I would like to do this also, uh, it's just going to be impossible to do that now, even though I would like to have that and, uh, we can't do that now, but if, if, if the county counselor would, uh, like to make some comments with regard to that, uh, then if he wants to explain a little further from, to what I have said, uh, to confirm that, uh, that would be fine. Uh, I don't believe we have really a county, uh, health order in place at the time. It's recommendations only. Uh, but go ahead. Joe, do you have any further comments?
Joel Sullivan, a county counselor. Well, the discussion I had with you, uh, Mr. Chairman, and yesterday with Mr. Friesen, concerned whether or not the county should at this time, uh, adopt a local health order, opting out of the, of the, uh, of the, uh, governor's mandate. Well, the, the mandate doesn't exist anymore. It was, it would have expired on its own terms on March 31, but Senate Bill 40, uh, wiped out all existing local health orders issued, I mean, health orders issued by the governor. So there is no, with respect to masking, there is no governor's order in place at this time. And my, my advice is that since, uh, the resolution, the, the order that you adopt references an existing order of the, of the governor on any particular subject and indicates that you are, uh, making findings as to why you should issue an order less restrictive than that and identifies which restrictions you wish to, um, to, to mitigate, reference has to be made to an actual existing order and what it is that you are opting out of. So whereas, uh, if we assume that the, the governor will, and, and by the way, the governor's office has said that she, we can anticipate that she will be reissuing, uh, an order establishing a face mask covering protocol. We don't know what that is. If it's identical to 2068 and she issues another order, um, I can, along the lines of the previous, the current order and the one we did in July, I, I can have prepared a, a rough draft, it would take me about five minutes to complete and I could have that available for adoption and approval by this board at such time as the governor actually makes such an order and we can reference it. And that would be my recommendation. I think it'd be premature to do it now if that's what's being asked.
And how quickly can we have a special meeting to consider that?
You, you can, you can call a meeting, uh, you can give, give notice to the, to the media and, and you, you can call a, a meeting in a matter of, of days if that's necessary.
Does that help answer, Commissioner Friesen? We can, depending upon what's that stated, uh, if we feel that there is a special meeting, uh, needed to do that, then we can call that. It just takes a few hours to let the media know.
Yeah, that, that makes sense. I, I would ask, uh, if it's, if it's okay with you, Mr. Chairman, that would the county council brief us and, and I ask the public on, on the changes that are occurring, the, at the, uh, beginning of the month, related to different authorities, um, so we're all on the same page.
That sounds right.
Okay, again, we're talking about Senate Bill 40, which was, uh, recently adopted by the legislature and, uh, and signed by the governor. It's in effect now because it's been published in the Kansas Register. Um, it's a rather broad bill that, that deals with a number of areas and I'm assuming that the, what you'd like to be briefed on are those which directly concern Reno County and the local health authority rather than, uh, the governor's office and things of that nature. So, uh, the bill is an act concerning generally governmental response to certain emergencies and prescribing powers, duties, and functions, in this case of the Board of Education of each school district, uh, the governing body of each community college and the governing body of each technical college related to COVID-19 health emergency and establishing judicial review. I think that's important to us because, uh, this particular piece, the, the section one of this legislation, uh, provided that, that during the state of disaster emergency related to the COVID-19 health emergency, uh, only the, only the Board of Education responsible for the maintenance, development, and operation of a school district shall have the authority to take any action, issue, issue any order or adopt any policy made or taken in response to such disaster emergency that affects the operation of any school or attendance center of such school district, including but not limited to any action or order or policy that. And then there's a litany of, of, uh, areas that we're talking about. So with respect to not only a school district, but the, a community college, which affects this community and the governing body of a technical college, basically then no order of the, of the governor or of local health officer or of this board affects those particular operations. They're, they're autonomous. Uh, that would not pertain to, however, to, uh, uh, orders involving quarantines. We're talking about emergency health orders. I think that's important to understand. Uh, with respect to the county government and the authority that this board of county commissioners has and that the, that the health officer has, there is one section of Senate Bill 40 pertaining to that. And, um, previous to that, the issuance of this or adoption of this particular Senate bill, uh, under KSA 65201, uh, which has to do with the establishing of a, a county Board of Health and, and the appointment of a, a county health officer and those, those provisions, those remain the same. But there is, uh, previous to this, if a, if a local health officer wished to issue an order as a result of an executive order of the governor, uh, that had to be reviewed and amended and/or could be revoked by the Board of County Commissioners at a meeting of the Board of County Commissioners, you had to take action with respect to it. And that was a change that came about, uh, last year. However, this is changed to the point that the health officer cannot issue an order mandating the wearing of face masks, uh, or limiting the size of gatherings or curtailing the operation of a business or controlling movement of the population in the county or limiting religious gatherings. Cannot issue such an order, uh, without first coming before this Board of County Commissioners and that, at the, she, she or he would have to propose such an order to the board and at the next regularly scheduled meeting of the board. at the next regularly scheduled meeting of the board of county commissioners, or at a special meeting of the board, the board shall review such proposed order and may take any action related to the proposed order the board deemed determines is necessary. And the order of the local health officers shall become effective if approved by this board, or if the board is unable to meet if approved by the chairperson of the board, and, and so forth. So there are, will be no more, as long as this law is in effect, there will be no, no more local health orders on this, on these particular subjects issued without the prior approval of the Board of County Commissioners. And I think that's how it essentially affects us. There's an appeals process that's established here. Anybody aggrieved by the order or by the action of, any order that's entered that goes to the district court provides a process for filing that, and prescribes a time period in which the court needs, can determine that particular order. So that's about all that Senate Bill forty does that directly relates to the authority of, of this board or the local health officer.
All right, thank you, Joe. Appreciate that. Commissioner Freezen, any other questions? Comments, rather?
Just, yeah, the, one thing I wanted to bring up that's just creating some ongoing confusion. You know, I've had multiple school board members call me and, and ask what, what mandates the county still has in place, and I've advised them that we have none. And, and then they, they've had conversations with their, their superintendent and, and the board, and I think that there's generally still an issue associated with what is perceived as orders from, from the Health Department versus recommendations. And I honestly don't know how to fix this. I just know that it's clear the legislature has put the authority of almost all health decisions with, with the school boards, and yet they continue to reach out to me and, indicate that based on the, the policy documents that we're outputting from the Health Department, that, that they don't have full autonomy. And so, again, I don't know how to solve that. They've asked, as, as a specific example, I think there's, there's maybe or maybe not a majority of, of, of a board in the county that wishes to adopt Cedric County's quarantine policy. And that seems to be a position they could take and one that they should make the decision on, but it doesn't seem like the, the Health Department is in agreement, and certainly that's the Health Department's prerogative. But I think that goes against the intent of, of, of the whole process of what the legislature went through, and I think we're, we're, we're creating a situation where the, the county is kind of intervening in, in a decision of, of an elected board, and I'd wish that we could keep ourselves out of that ultimate discussion. I certainly need to continue to provide advice and recommendations, but there's an ongoing issue with that, and we honestly don't know how to solve it, but I thought I'd bring it up and see what the other commissioners feel on that topic.
Well, thank you, sir. Commissioner Sellers?
Just one item. Obviously, the commission has lifted the Reno County mask mandate as of last week. I'd just like to read a couple phrases from a, a article, March thirtieth, today at seven thirty-five AM. New cases in the U.S. continued to rise the past week, jumping as much as twelve percent nationwide. Seven-day average of new cases topped sixty-three thousand for the first time in nearly a month. I just hope that Reno County residents will continue to do their part to be safe so that our numbers don't go in an opposite direction. Right now, our numbers are very good, and, and we want to keep them that way, and, and I hope that every citizen will take it upon themselves to do what they can to keep the, the virus rates down and, and low. We don't want to go through another phase like we did and have the deaths that we did, and I think it's dependent on every citizen to do their part. Thank you.
I would second your comments, Commissioner Sellers. I would, I would, I'd like to comment a little bit that I think the commission, especially our administrator, is doing a long ways towards looking at both short and long-term solutions to different projects and different things that the county needs to look at long-term, and I appreciate that idea. We did attend the K ninety-six corridor Economic Coalition and toured the Hutton Construction Building, and it was good to, good to be in person with the people that are involved in K ninety-six, so appreciate that. And so, at this time, let county counselors suggest the motion that Commissioner Sellers will make.
Maybe.
Maybe.
Depends on what Joe says.
That's absolutely right. Well, I, I would request a motion for this board to recess into executive session for not to exceed thirty minutes, the purpose of confirming with legal counsel on a privileged legal matter relating to the county's statutory authority for the construction and replacement of bridges. No formal decision is expected. I anticipate this to be informational only. I would request that the county administrator remain, and it's important that the Public Works Director remain for the session. Following the executive session, I anticipate the board will return to regular session adjourned for the day.
I make that motion.
I'll second the motion. Roll call.
Commissioner Freezen?
Yes.
Commissioner Sellers?
Yes.
Commissioner Hertz?
Yes. I thought motions, and so the meeting is recessed, executive session for thirty minutes, starting at eleven twenty-five?